Today is May 5th of 2020. We excited tonight to be able to continue to do the county business and have our monthly meeting tonight. Our thoughtful today is I have an irrepressible desire to live till I can be assured that the world is a little better for my having lived in it. That's Abraham Lincoln. I want to go ahead tonight and officially call this meeting to order tonight. I did get a flag here tonight, so we're gonna do our pledge allegiance also tonight. But I'm gonna ask that Commissioner Cowan, if you would, would you lead us in our prayer, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My Father, we come to you tonight, Lord. Thank you, Lord, for your blessings on our country, Lord. And Lord, we know that we're in a tight situation, Lord, and Lord, we know that you can intervene in that. But Lord, we thank you, Lord, for your grace and mercy. We thank you, Lord, for Newton County and the people that live here. We just pray, Lord God, that you give us wisdom in making decisions tonight. We ask all this in Christ's name. Amen.
And Commissioner Schultz, if you would, would you lead us in our pledge tonight? And we do have our flag right here, so if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are some citizens out there who wanted to make sure that we incorporate a pledge back into our meeting. So we want to make sure we do that. I think that is the right thing to do. Next on our agenda is our agenda adoption. Commissioners, you had opportunity to look at the agenda tonight, if you would. I ask for a motion that we approve, please.
So moved. District 1.
Second, District 3.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Schultz. Any discussion? All in favor?
It's an aye from District 1. It's an aye from District 2.
Aye from District 3.
Aye from District 5.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson, are you there yet? Thank you. It passes 4 to 0. Thank you.
Chairman, I'll check back with him to see if he got it, okay?
Next on agenda is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity, we let citizens make comments about agenda topics only. You have 3 minutes to do so. We will be keeping time here. If you would, please hit star 6 and unmute your phone. If you want to make comments about agenda topics only. If you would, hit star 6 and able to unmute your phone. I hear somebody, is somebody trying to make comments? Well, thank you. Next on our agenda is the chairman's report. And tonight, we are excited. Think she is a local hero. She's a superhero. Dr. Arona, she is the director of the Newton County Health Department, not only Newton County, but Gwinnett, Rockdale, and Newton County. And she is here tonight to give us an update on this COVID-19. And Dr. Arona, first of all, we just want to say thank you for all that you are doing to help keep our community safe and to help bring awareness to this COVID-19. You're doing so many awesome things, you know, 3 counties and one as big as Gwinnett. I just don't know how you keep up with all of this. But we are excited to have you tonight. And if you will, please give us an update on this COVID-19.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you so much. And I am just grateful to be able to be here with you guys tonight. And I feel led to have taken this position for such a time as this. And I'm just daily in prayer asking for guidance and wisdom every day. And I'm just so grateful to work for counties, including yours, that is just so supportive and so wonderful in terms of keeping communities' hearts as a priority and their health and everything. I'm just grateful, just grateful to you, Commissioner, all of you commissioners and Chairman. So let me start with some numbers. First of all, worldwide, we have over 3.6 million cases now, and we have over a quarter of a million deaths. United States has 1.2, over 1.2 million cases now, and we've toppled over 70,000 deaths. Georgia has 29,769 cases now, almost 30,000, with 1,292 deaths. Our district has, for Gwinnett, I'll just give you all 3 of them, Gwinnett has 2,094 cases with 77 deaths. Newton County has 217 cases with 8 deaths. And Rockdale has 203 cases with 6 deaths. Our median age for cases is 48. For the deaths, median age is 79 years old. And of the deaths, 86% of those were hospitalized. We do have a COVID-19 snapshot, a snapshot that's on our website now. It's gnrhealth.com. And if you click the more information under the COVID-19 bullet and scroll down, you'll see a document similar to this. And right below the map, if you just click on that, this information will all come up. And this is basically information about male, female, race, ethnicity. It's also got our case history, confirmed and presumptive cases, a graph on the back with some other data as well. That is updated right now, weekly, every Tuesday or Monday night at midnight, so it's fresh this morning. Or yeah, so if you look at that, it's up-to-date information. I'm trying to update it more than once a week right now, but it's pretty labor-intensive, and so we're gonna try to do that. Of our testing, we have increased and ramped up our testing to where we're doing. We have tested over 6,150 tests now we've conducted. We have a 10% positivity rate overall. We tested at the Georgia International Horse Park last Friday and did 1,189 tests, and there was a 5% positivity rate for that. So overall, our larger spocks have a lower positivity rate, but overall, it's around 10% positivity rate. So right now, we're testing Monday through Thursday, every day in Gwinnett County and a central location for Newton and Rockdale. We have been at Cousins Middle School this week, but this is the last week we're gonna be able to use that facility because they want to get back into the school and do some things there. So we're gonna shift over now to the Newton Career Academy, which is a really nice place. Thank you for that, Commissioner. So we're still gonna do that Monday through Thursday. We do have a test site on Saturday mornings in Gwinnett County, and we will, if there were need for it, in Newton and Rockdale, but we haven't seen the interest for that so far. I wanted to run both a site in Rockdale and one in Newton, but we don't have enough interest to run both. And so our plan right now is to do those. I think we're gonna stop doing the larger test events because it's so labor-intensive. Increase the numbers that we're doing on a daily basis. We can cover the same amount of testing. We're up to over 3,000 a week now, and our goal is to get to 4,000 tests per week. And we're on track to do that. We're just trying to build up our test kit supplies in order to be able to do that. So we're looking also at a second location in Gwinnett County to fit more in the Norcross area, because we believe that there's a lot of the population that doesn't have vehicle access to get to our other places. So we're looking for sites in that location as well. We also have ramped up our case investigation epidemiology team because all the positives in Georgia are reported for our district to the Health Department. We've also had to increase our contact tracing staff because every time you have a positive, you now track their cases, their contacts, and so we've been doing that as well. Plus, we have a resulting team now. Our system is set up so that all the negatives are on portal access for patients, so we don't have to report all the negatives, just those that don't or don't want to or can't use the portal. But the National Guard has been testing, and all of their results need to be called upon, so we're doing about 1,000 to 1,200 results for them every week as well. And that's getting a little bit easier. But I still do request that if anyone is tested by the National Guard, if they would please let me know so that I can reach out, because sometimes we're unaware that the National Guard has been there. And I really want people to get timely results so that we don't have any trouble. You guys probably all heard about this new drug called remdesivir, which is an IV medication given to patients who are severely ill with COVID-19. And it's shown to be about 31% of the patients that get this are better recover quicker. And so it's shown some promise. And it's made by Gilead, and Gilead is donating over a million doses for this. This was a medication that was investigated at the time of our Ebola days. And so that looks very promising, although in China, they had some reports that it wasn't working as well. But here, we've had some luck. Oxford University is also looking at a vaccine, and it's very promising looking in monkeys, and so they've got this accelerated to human studies now. And so we're hoping that by the first of the year, that might be available, and cross your fingers, maybe sooner. We have a lot of billboards that we've been using, advertising that was donated to us by, I'll get the name of it in just a second, donated to us by Outfront Media is the name of it. And so we're grateful to them, and we're just advertising the phone number to call to get scheduled, because we're scheduling people in the community who are ill, and also businesses that want to get back to work, and they want their employees tested. We're offering to them as well. And we do test some asymptomatic people now, healthcare workers, infrastructure workers, which are even, you know, supermarket employees, and also first responders, and then people who have known contacts to COVID-19 cases. So we're testing those as well. So we are testing more of the asymptomatic population and seeing that too. Our positivity rate, like I said, is 10%. So with that, I will pause and ask if you have any questions, or if I didn't cover something, please let me know.
Thank you. Thank you much. Commissioners, we're gonna open up just for a few moments for our questions. Guys, we'll start off with District 1. Commissioner, was you having anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Arona. So, you know, you turn on the news and you hear of a new possible vaccine every day. And first, we're here in 18 months and 24 months to market. So the vaccine that you mentioned, is that, do you believe that's the quickest would be, maybe 4th quarter? You believe that's the quickest we'll see some type of vaccine on that scale?
Yes, Commissioner, good question. There are 9 vaccines that I know of that are being developed and looked into, and this was the one that's shown the most promise that I'm aware of out of Oxford University. And so I can't imagine that a vaccine will be available before the fall. We're very close to the fall anyway. I couldn't, had to double-check today. I can't believe we're in May already. But so Dr. Fauci thinks it might be available by January, and I did some research, and they're really pushing to try to get this out sooner, of course, to us. But that's the one that has the most progress that I know of.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Commissioner Mason, you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Dr. Arona, for providing that information to us. It was very, very valuable, great numbers. I wanted to know, you had mentioned where we can go and find the map, and I think I missed it. What was the website again?
Okay, sure. It's a G N R for Gwinnett, Newton, Rockdale, Health, H E A L T H, dot com. GnRhealth.com. And there's a bullet that comes right up about COVID-19. If you click on the learn more about it, and then the page will come up, and if you scroll down, you'll see the map. And right underneath the zip code map, there's a link there. If you just press that, you'll see the whole report. And I do want to caution you, when you're looking at the case confirmed, the daily confirmed and presumptive infections graph, remember that early on, we were not testing the number of people that we're testing now. We were only testing, prioritizing those to sick healthcare workers and all that. And so the numbers that are reported very early on is very different than the numbers we're reporting now. So if you weren't paying attention to that, you would look and see we have a major outbreak going on, right? Because we're testing so many more people, so our positive, you know, is higher. And so you have to keep in mind the timetable of when the testing were opened up to the general public. And that's only been 2 weeks as of tomorrow. So be sure to just pay attention. The other thing is, on the right-hand side of that curve, there's a 2-week period of time that is a lag in data reporting. So it looks like our peak might have been sometime last week, but you have to remember the last part of that curve is data that's lacking. So 2 weeks from now, we'll see whether that's really a decline or whether there's actually more. So be careful how you look at that.
Okay. And then, do you know any statistical data on like, are we testing a lot of our first responders on a consistent basis, or are these just average citizens that are feeling sick? I know you had mentioned that, I think you said, we have not started testing asymptomatic yet.
Well, yes, sir. We, first of all, we have been testing symptomatic first responders. Now we're testing asymptomatic first responders and healthcare workers. We're still testing those that have developed symptoms, but we've been testing that group all along. That's why our positivity rate was higher to begin with. It was 16% initially, because, you know, healthcare workers and first responders, when they're ill, they were the ones that we were testing, plus those that have, you know, high-risk factors and lived in congregate settings or worked there, contacts, all that. So that's why the positivity rate was higher. Now, it's a little bit lower because we're testing more of the population. So the first responders and all that, we are still working at. And I forgot your second part of your question.
That was basically it. I was just, because you answered, because you said we are testing asymptomatic, and I thought I heard you say that, but I wanted to get that correct.
Yes. And we are testing other asymptomatic workers too, infrastructure, you know, type of, and like I've had several businesses that have called and said, hey, I just really want to make sure my employees are negative before we open back up. And so we'll bring those people in too, and they're asymptomatic as well.
And one last question. Do we know that for those that have already been positively impacted and they have recovered, is it a possibility that they can get re-insected with COVID-19?
Yes, Commissioner, there is, we don't know the answer to that question. There have been cases that appear that a same person has been infected twice, but the real question is, were they just lingered and then they kind of had an exacerbation of it before they were completely recovered? The antibody tests, hopefully, over time, will give us more of those types of answers because, and this is what the CDC is pairing with Dacab in Fulton County, you might have heard about, using an antibody test to test the general public. They're going house to house in certain regions and just testing people, trying to get an idea of what the serial prevalence rate is in our community. That means who's test positive for COVID-19 as if they were exposed before. But again, no one knows how long that immunity may last. So until more data and more research is done, we won't really understand it all completely.
Okay. Thank you so much, Dr. Arona, and I appreciate all the work that you're doing, and thank you for all the information you provided. This was very, very good.
Good. Thank you. My pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Henderson, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead. So are you having any questions for Dr. Arona about the COVID-19?
Yes, I do. The question that I have, well, first of all, I appreciate you for coming and giving us this information, and it really will help me out a whole lot. Question that I have is the University of Georgia, they were talking about, and it was, you know, advertised, like I watched the news, and they were advertising that before the end of the year, they would have a vaccine that would be available for the citizen, I guess for the United States and Georgia. So do you know anything about that?
I'm not sure. I need to look into that to be sure, but I think that they are working with a consortium of universities at this. I don't know that it's specifically UGA. And I knew of the fact that they're working on a vaccine, but I hadn't heard anything about a projected time as to when it would be available. But I can look into that and check back with you.
Yes, ma'am. What I've seen was it was on television, as usual, and it was directly from the University of Georgia. And the gentleman came on, one of their scientists, and said that he had developed a vaccine for one of the other viruses, and that he believed that he was going to somewhat mix it, come out another end, and create this vaccine, but he had to go through a series of tests, which he had said that it would be completed by the end of this year.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna look at that right away after we finish here, and I will let you all know. And I would love that if Georgia came out with that.
Amen, sister. I'm on the same page with that one. I guess my last question, I know at first, when we first started testing and coveting, I was, had been abreast of the information from the county manager, Lord Currie, that our first responders were being tested at the Parry-Cousin Historic Gym. And I guess the question I'm asking is, are they still testing those, our first responders at the gym?
We were never testing anyone at the gym, so I'm not sure who, but, you know, we're not the only ones that are testing, and so, and we don't want to be the only ones testing. The more people that do the tests, the better. All of the positives are reported to us because it is mandatory reporting disease. But I don't, we never tested at a gym, so it wasn't us, and I can't speak to that.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Lord Currie, is he on the line, our county manager?
Yeah, he is. I don't, yeah, Commissioner, I don't know who was conducting the testing. I don't believe that the testing is still, the testing is still going on. A lot of our first responders have been tested over at the horse park when they were there, but I don't believe that it's still continuing.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Guys, we are kind of running about 5 minutes, and we got to go into zoning. I'm gonna skip Commissioner Schultz. I'm gonna go back to Commissioner Schultz. Commissioner Schultz, you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Arona. So I read today in the Atlanta Journal-Constitution that GNR is piloting an app for contact tracing. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yes, this is a web-based app, Google app, application for contact tracing. This has nothing to do with the Apple app that locates people near you that have positive COVID-19. It's not that at all. This is used by the Health Department as a tool to be able to expand its contact tracing. So if we have a positive, we enter them into the contact tracing and ask them who that they've been in contact with, and then this sends a text message to that person, and then it's very interactive and public-forward facing. And so they can interact and report their symptoms on a daily basis and all that, and there's a link to it to the executive administrative order for enforcing isolation and quarantine practices. So it's really kind of nice, because instead of making daily phone calls to check on people, there's an opportunity for people to text their information and keep track of it that way. So it's going to be a really nice tool. Coastal is the rural place that's piloting, and us, of course, is the metro. I raised my hand to do that because I really wanted to get on board with that soon, but before too long, it's going to be available to other districts as well. And it's not for, you know, anything other than just managing the contact tracing. And after a period of 14-day quarantine, if everything's fine and they haven't developed symptoms, then they essentially go off of the app as a completed case. So, and it keeps track of all this data, which is really pretty special.
So one other question. I noticed at my business over the weekend that a lot of people had really, as much as we have been real advocates for social distancing and sanitizing and everything, the public seems to have become a little bit more relaxed since the order was lifted. And I'd like for you to tell us exactly. Some people say, well, you know, I don't need to wear a mask because I'm not 65 or older, and I don't have any symptoms, and I don't, I mean, I don't have any underlying health problems. Can you help clarify what we are really supposed to do as a population and what, you know, what our personal responsibility is right now, and what our responsibility as elected leaders is to make sure that the public complies?
Yes, Commissioner, and thank you so much for that question, because this is so critical at this point. And, you know, you have those people who are extremely worried about this and buy up all the, you know, paper towels they can, and then you've got, on the other hand, where people are very blasé about this. And the real message is to be in the middle and to be very personally responsible for what's going on. Remember that when you wear a mask, it's to protect others from you, not you from others. And so it's actually a respect issue, and that's how I got it across to my children. It's like wearing a mask is respectful to someone else, is just saying, hey, I respect that you may, you know, that you don't want this. The other thing is, is that, so 6 feet apart, social distancing is critical. Washing hands, disinfecting surfaces, staying home when you're sick, and staying away from sick people, and using a mask to really cut down on the transmission of this virus. So simple, simple things. And I like to say to everyone, especially the younger population now, that seems to be kind of careless and blasé about this, is that, you know, the elderly people spent much of their life in sacrifice for us in world wars and different things like that, and all we have to do is stay home for them. It's the least that we can do. Or the least that we can do is to protect them from ourselves, wearing masks and being careful. So I just, I like to push it off as a matter of respect for other people. And so a lot of times, I think that gets the message out there sooner. And we don't want the numbers to be higher again and end up where we were before, and then have to make decisions about closing things down again. And, you know, so what we did works. There's evidence that shows that curve has flattened. Our hospitals have not been overloaded like we knew they would be, like we, we were very, very fearful of that, and it didn't happen. And it didn't happen because of what the public did with social distancing and all the measures. So the message is, hey, that worked. Let's not ruin it now at this point when we're trying to get back to work. So you can get back to work and open up your business. Be sure to follow the guidelines, and don't open up if you can't follow those guidelines. Simple as that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner, excuse me. Thank you. Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Cowan. We don't have zoning at 7:30, but we do have zoning night. So you can go ahead with your question, please.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The only question I have for Dr. Arona is do we have any information on the recovery rates? People that have tested positive and have been dismissed or they've been labeled as recovered yet?
No, sir. We haven't kept track of that primarily because all we can do is really look. Remember, we were not testing everybody. It's not like we tested the entire population. We only tested certain portions of the population. So it's really hard to know how many people actually had it and recovered from it. So at this point, because of how the data has been collected, that would have to be assumptive. What I can tell you is that our hospitalization rate among cases is 18%. So with that, you know that there's 82% of people that don't require hospitalization and have never required hospitalization. So you can assume that those recovered. And 83% of the deaths involved hospitalization, right? So not very many who were hospitalized, I mean, in that age range. You can tell that, that they're, that those who, you know, those who recover from hospitalization when they're on ventilators are very few that actually survived that. So again, putting an actual number on the, on what's recovered is very hard. But you can kind of surmise still that over 85% of people who get this, it's very mild and they recover from that. I think that's safe to say.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. Kerr, you have anything? Want to make sure I give you an opportunity to ask a question as well?
No, sir. I don't have anything for Dr. Arona. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Arona, thank you so much for being here tonight. Always is a blessing to hear from you. Like I say, you, you bring out so much information and, and these three communities that we are lucky to have you.
Thank you.
We are. I see you all over the place. I see your picture all over the place. And like I always say, I can't wait to get back into our board meetings.
Me too.
Yeah, cannot wait. I cannot wait. Tell the board how great of a job you have done for this, for this community and the surrounding communities.
Thank you so much. Y'all stay well. And if you need me, call me. My cell phone number is 678-944189. Everyone has it. You know, prior to this rule, I was OB-GYN and all my patients in Gwinnett County had, and all over, had my cell phone. So it doesn't bother me. But seriously, I need you to have it just in case you need something I can help you with, okay?
And I will tell you, she answered the phone at 1 o'clock in the morning. I mean, she will. She definitely will. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Y'all have a blessed day.
You too. Thanks.
Bye-bye.
Also, I hate to move on without acknowledging Judge Roberts and what she's meant to this community. You know, to lose someone like that, you know, I was just talking to someone and they was talking about the impact that she had made on so many kids and so many different families who have been struggling. And the things that she have helped them with and the program that she had put in place so that families can, can benefit from. So, and you know, I'm in Leadership, Georgia, and her name is known. I did not know it, but her name is known throughout the state. I had so many people in Leadership, Georgia calling about her. So I just, I want to make sure. I don't know if her family is listening or anybody that's connected to her, her family is listening. But I do want to make sure that I just let Newton County know that there were so many people throughout the state of Georgia that loved her. And she's gonna be truly missed in this community. Also, I want to acknowledge Judge Osborne, who retired. And we want to wish him well for his service. You know, he is, he is one who's a legend in this community. You know, he's been around for a while. His finger print is on so many different things. It's amazing to me. But we want to wish, wish him well and congratulate him also. And also, our very own, he's a new father. Mr. Mason, Commissioner Mason, congratulations, sir. Baby Mason, we are, we are so excited for you and mom. And, you know, I pray everyone is doing well. You said they were. Everybody's doing okay. Congratulations. Look like you got a cigar. Is that, that's a cigar?
No, sir. I'm waiting on you to buy me one. That's the chairman's job.
I got you. I got you.
Provide the commissioners with the new cigar.
I got you. I definitely got you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, sir.
You get opportunity to talk more about that in our commission of comments. Mr. Kerr, turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'd also like to offer congratulations to the Mason family. It's a wonderful thing to have, to have a baby and they're great. But I tell you what, as a, as a grandfather, it's even better the second time around when you get to have a little one. So congratulations to you and your family, Commissioner Mason. What I'd like to do tonight is talk a little bit about our reopening to the public. We've been closed now, as you all know, to the public for several weeks. The governor declared a state of emergency. That will actually run until June 12th. The courts, the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court has issued a state of emergency for the judicial system. And that has been extended also to June 12th. The order has changed a little somewhat from the initial order. But, and so they are going to be able to do a few more things. But it is still restrictive. And there are certain things that they, that they will not be able to do and not be able to conduct business as usual. But as we move along in the, in this process, I think it is time for us, since the most recent decision by the governor to lift the stay-in-place order for certain individuals, or rather, the shelter-in-place order. Does not completely, again, the emergency order is still in place. And it is still, shelter-in-place is still for those people who are at the high-risk categories, those people with certain ailments, those people over 65, people with, who suffer from diabetes, chronic lung disease. And there are several other things that are listed in the order that I won't go into. But those folks are still ordered to shelter in place. But the restrictions have been eased and some of the nonessential businesses have been reopening, provided that they had crowds fewer than 10 people and that they were able to maintain the separation, six feet of separation in between individuals so that we would maintain those social distancing requirements. And also that the businesses were able to provide the necessary protective, personal protective equipment for their employees and to provide the hand sanitation products and the sanitizers and so forth for their equipment and all to minimize the exposure of their employees and the public to possible germs. I have, I talked with the city manager for the city of Covington. I also took a look at several of the other counties and municipalities around the state. There are a number of jurisdictions who are beginning to phase back in their employees. A number of jurisdictions were completely shut down. When we closed our doors to the public, we continued to provide as many services and as, as much to provide as many things as we could for the public. We continued to service our building permits. We continued to do inspections. Our finance department continued to operate. Our HR department continued to operate and so on. And we were able to do quite a bit of public works projects by splitting up our personnel into smaller crews. And so we were able to continue doing our work so that we would not get too far behind when we were able to bring all of our, our people back in. So we have been doing more than a lot of the other governments have been during this period of time, ever mindful of making sure that we did not have too many people in the office and that we did provide masks. We also had gloves available. We had the hand sanitizers. People were checked for temperatures when they came in in the morning. And we were mindful and followed those guidelines that had been established by the CDC and the Department of Public Health. So at this point, it looks, it appears that many of the other jurisdictions are transitioning back to a full, to fully operational with the exception of the ports and their restrictions. And so my recommendation would be that we would open back our offices to the public on Monday, May 18th. What, or I'm sorry, May 15th. May, whoops, let me find my date. Sorry, folks. Let me look at my calendar. I had the 18th, but I think what I meant to say, yes, Monday, May 18th. I'm sorry. On Monday, May, whoops, on Monday, May 18th. Am I still with you?
Yes, sir.
Good, good. On Monday, May 18th, that will give us sufficient time to, to finish buttoning up some of the details that we need to attend to. All of the departments, the department heads and the constitutional officers, we all had a, conducted a meeting yesterday. Many of the departments and all have already, had already begun making plans for the reopening. And there are some details that continue to need to be worked out. But we are continuing to work on plans on how to deal with crowd control and what we'll need to put in place in order to maintain the social distancing and to answer the concerns of our employees in terms of the, their work areas. We need to purchase, get some additional cleaning supplies. We have already ordered and have masks and gloves and so forth on the way. And we are working to coordinate with our deputies as, as far as planning out how to let people in and out of the building. The areas where we have a lot of traffic, for instance, our tag office has already, pardon me, they've already worked out a plan on how to circulate people through the building. Elections has also done the same thing. We've worked out a plan for development services. Those are primarily the high-traffic areas that we have in the administration building. We are working with the solid waste department to, and I'll be working with Kevin Walters, our landfill director, to come up with a plan for how we will take care of the hang tag sales for this year. And so we are well on our way to getting all of those things buttoned down. I believe that we'll have, opening on May the 18th will give us sufficient time to complete all of those tasks and to have all of those things lined up so that we won't have opened too, too quickly. So I would recommend that we could go ahead and reopen to the public. We'll also have, there are certain things that we also need to keep in mind during this time. There were changes that were made to the Family Medical Leave Act. And there was instituted the Emergency FMLA, which has some different requirements to it. There is extended family medical leave under certain circumstances. And so we are also going to be putting together a, an instruction manual, if you will, that specifically pertains to medical leave during this particular time. And this will address those employees that may have particular needs or maybe among the, the high-risk population that may not be able to come back to work at this time. We still, we have a number of people who are currently working from home. So there is a possibility that some of those people may need to continue to do so for a period of time. However, we would like to bring as many people possible back into our offices in order that we can open up, in order that we can serve the public. While we've had a lot of success in people working from home, we can't bring, can't really open to the public unless we make sure that we have sufficient numbers of people in the office to take care of the, the public that we know that, that will be, that will be coming in. So I'd like to recommend that we do open on the, open at that time. The other date, if you would like to consider an alternate date, the other date might be that you would want to consider opening on June 13th, which is the day after the governor's order to, the governor's emergency order expires. That would be another acceptable date. That would postpone it a few more weeks. But certainly that, that would be a workable date as well. So I'll put that out there for your consideration and, and discussion.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Commissioner, your thoughts? We're just gonna poll the board, guys.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Can, are we gonna ask questions now or can I ask a question later?
You can ask him. I mean, yeah, you can ask him now.
I do agree with May 18th. If the current conditions stay constant, I do agree with that. Well, just a comment or two, and I'm dealing with it now at my, at my office. Childcare issues. School typically would have been out, I believe, the third week of this month. And most parents have childcare issues worked out for the summer months. I don't know if we're not, if the state is not at full operation and childcare facilities are not at full operation. I don't know what challenges that will present, but keep that in mind. That there may be FMLA available for that. I don't know. The other thing is, and it's, I'd like to see it sometime over the next couple of weeks, if possible. Well, after some, obviously after May 18th, is some type of debriefing document that, that demonstrates where we are by department in terms of tasks. How are we able to keep up? How many work from home? What, what work, what task were we not able to perform? What went lacking? I can't help, I can't help but believe that during this time, well, I haven't gotten one, one complaint, to be honest with you, but it's in terms of services go. But I can't help but believe we found some efficiencies in the way we this turn in terms of services go, but I can't help but believe we found some efficiencies in the way we operate with this. I would imagine most, most businesses would, and I can't, I can't imagine that we wouldn't either. But I would like to see some type of, and I don't know exactly what it would look like. It doesn't have to be war and peace. I mean, a page or two demonstrating by department, some type of debriefing on where we are and what we were able to accomplish while we were out. So you and I may talk about that offline later too. So thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason, you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would do wanna ask Lloyd, what would make the difference if we open up on June thirteenth versus May eighteenth? Would there be any major difference? You know, would it delay anything? So I just wanna know, have we looked at what would be the major difference if we open later versus sooner?
Well, I think the there is primarily, there's, there's an expectation among the public now that we are moving in a positive kind of perception, that we're moving in a positive direction. I mean, as far as the 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 pandemic is going. And I think that as the restrictions on business is businesses are being lifted, that there's also an expectation that government would begin to be able to provide or to be more accessible and to be able to provide the the services that they were were used to using prior to the closures. Even though we've had quite a, again, as I mentioned, quite a but a bit of success with people utilizing online services and all, there's still a large portion of our population that likes to conduct business face to face. There's still a large number of people that prefer to come into the tax office to buy their tags and to pay their taxes. They prefer to come into the to the Development Services Office to obtain their permits or to ask questions about zoning or to ask questions about variances and so forth. And so I, I, and one of the things I think that we have really done a good job of here in this county for a number of years and continue to do so, and that is making ourselves available and accessible to the public. And so, you know, they've come to expect that and really, you know, demand that. And so when we've not been available, I think they've understood that for the reasons why. But I I think that that they do wanna want to be, want us to be able to be accessible to them again. As far as delaying it, I don't know that it is. One of the things would be it may impinge on our ability to complete some of our public works projects because we're not able to get some of the larger projects done because we have to. Because it is difficult to to do some things with really small numbers. If we open it up a little bit, I think it'll be a little easier for us to have the larger groups together. That's one thing. As far as being able, the other thing too is in recruitment for personnel, having the buildings open, again, open to the public. Then the people can come in, pick up an application if they want to. You know, if there's with positions open, it makes the interview process a lot easier as well. A lot of people don't like to interview via Skype or FaceTime. And so it would, you know, make that a little bit easier. In addition to that, I think you, when you think about the offices such as elections, being able to register for, even though you can register when you pick up your when you get your license and you register, you can register online. There are those folks that wanna register in person. The extension office is another one. People wanna drop off their samples to the extension office or they wanna go by and pick up their information, speak to the four H coordinators, things like that. So I think it's really more of being accessible to the public than 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 really anything else. And I think that if we, as provided that we do the things that were that are being recommended that we do in terms of following the protocols that C D C and the Department of Public Health have have put out there. I think that we would be, you know, relatively safe, if you will, in conducting business.
Okay. And I, and I guess I'm just thinking along the line, the terms of, you know, possibly if we did wait until June the thirteenth, you know, maybe that'll allow more time for people to get tested. You know, even for those that may have been positively impacted, like they were positive, gives them more time to recover. We're doing everything we can to possibly keep our citizens safe as well. But have we ever looked into as well to see, because I believe early voting starts May the eighteenth as well? Do we know, you know, if we did not open on May eighteenth, would that potentially affect early voting? Or how would that work? Have we looked into that at all as well?
Actually, early voting will happen regardless of whether we're open, whether the rest of the building is open to the public. That is one thing that will will definitely happen. We are set up to have the early voting. We've got the 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 room established where we're gonna have that. Already made arrangements and spaced out where the machines will be. And so there's ample room in between those. There's flexible or plastic dividers between the machines and between the pole where the pole workers will be. We're making provision to make sure that we have cleaning stations for any of the pins and things that people would be using to mark the ballots. And then we will be sanitizing the machines and so forth all during the day. So we've got all of those things, you know, already taken care of. But even if we were not open to the public, that portion of the building would be open for people to to vote.
Okay, that that definitely makes sense. But I, you know, lastly, I just wanna say, I think we should really, and maybe if we work possibly with Dr. Arona more to kinda see, you know, where the numbers are as we get closer to that May eighteenth date to see if that's something we should do. Or, you know, maybe wait if we see that the numbers are still increasing to say, okay, well, maybe if the numbers are still increasing, maybe we should possibly just hold off until June thirteenth. So I would think from a safety perspective for the citizens as well as for the employees, look at the numbers before we open to kinda determine would May eighteenth or June thirteenth be the best.
Sure, I mean, all of this is, of course, contingent on things, you know, staying the same or improving. I mean, as you know, this is, the situation is very dynamic and changes daily. So, you know, it's, it's all hinges to on what what happens with the governor, what happens. You know, if if there are changes to his orders and if for some reason things, we slide, things don't continue to improve and he decides to make a change in his order, then obviously we would need to make a change in what we're doing. But it's all predicated on on the things moving in the in the correct, in the proper direction. So.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, Lloyd, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Schultz.
Oh.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lloyd, you know, I think that one of the things that we have to remember is when we do start to open back up is how many of our staff and our employees actually fall into that high risk category? How many of our staff are over sixty-five? How many of them have diabetes? How many of them have asthma, heart disease, have a are overweight or, you know, substantially overweight? Because when we open back up, we're putting our staff at risk. And I think that that is something that we really need to strongly consider because we may need to, I I know that when I was talking to the Angela's in elections, they said that a lot of their election workers are over sixty-five. So they're going to have to have a rotation because they can't have them all there at the same time. And they can't have the the staff members that are supposed to work there at the same time because the six, those that are over sixty-five will not be there. So I think that that's something that we need to really look at our staffing numbers. I can tell you this from at least my personal experience with my own business being open. When you open back to the public, there is a, there is a very high rate, there's, you as the manager have to be on your toes a lot to make sure that the social distancing is taking place. It's a lot more labor intensive for the managers to make sure that their staff and the public are simultaneously protected. And so jobs that may have taken fifteen minutes before now take thirty minutes. And you have to add the sanitizing step as well. So I just think that all of those need to be considered. And it may be that what we want to do is phase in a few departments. But we know that we're going to have elections that will start on May eighteenth. So we know that elections will be interfacing with the public. And perhaps maybe we look at public works going back to a full staffing and maybe doing those two and then having a rolling start to add those departments back online. I know it might be confusing for the public, but in terms of the county being able to manage it, I think that it might be well worth the consideration.
Sorry, I was muted. Yeah, we are, we have taken a look at all of those things. And yes, it it will be a challenge, particularly to keep people separated. That's why we are taking the time to make sure that we have something that we have a plan in place that we've done all the, we're looking at a combination of of the floor markings and wall markings so that we keep people separated as best we can. And also that we're looking at a total number of persons at a time that would be in the offices as well as looking at all those factors of our employees that we, to make sure that we're meeting those requirements and not, you know, putting anybody at risk.
That's everything, Commissioner? That's everything?
That's all.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Henderson.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I, if if I, hit me out a little bit, Lloyd, if you if you would, please. If I remember correctly, the governor's order let some of the younger people be able to, you know, maybe go out and and distance themselves. But anyone under, over sixty-five or over or older, they would have, they're still considered to be sheltered in place. And so I was thinking, you know, while I was, while I was listening to the conversation, was it, what about our employers if we have any, you know, sixty-five years of age? And do they come back to work or are they still sheltered in in place? It was, I guess mandated by the governor.
Well, we have a few employees that are over sixty-five. And they they would need to to continue doing the the shelter in place and to be able to work from home. We provided several people, well, they would, pardon me, be able to work from home utilizing, we'd give them a a V P N number so that they could access the our our network and be able to do their work from home.
Absolutely.
So, and those people, so they would still be able to, you know, until the emergency was lifted, which would be presumably would be June twelfth. You know, but we would have to, beyond that date, we would have to see, you know, what if the governor extended it at all? We would just have to kinda look at each case individually and see what the governor's orders would have to say beyond that.
Oh, absolutely. My last question is that, it's my understanding that that our first responders are the ones who are at risk, there was, there was a, either mandate by the by the federal government that they would give them hazard pay. So could you kinda tell me a little bit about that?
I have not heard that. So I'm not real sure what exactly that is. I'd be glad to take a look into it, but I had not, the federal government may be paying some of their folks, but most of the jurisdictions here in Georgia are not paying, are not paying any additional hazard pay. Some of them are, have taken, have decided to do so, but most of the jurisdictions here are not. But I'd be glad to look into, see what the federal government might have wanted.
So thank you. And if you, if you do look into, to be so kind, let me know.
Sure, I'd be glad to.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Cowan.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Currie, have anything yet?
No, sir. I guess I would just like to see if there's a consensus.
Let me poll the board. Commissioner Edwards, that's the eighteenth or the twelfth?
Eighteenth.
Commissioner Mason, eighteenth or the twelfth?
Um, you mean like, uh, June thirteen?
Let me clarify that. May the eighteenth or June the twelfth? I'm sorry.
I think June would probably be better.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Schultz, May the eighteenth or June the twelfth?
I'm assuming that elections would not be part of the June the thirteenth, we're talking about June the thirteenth, right? Because the order goes, stays in effect until the twelfth.
Yep, June thirteenth.
I'm for, I'm just not comfortable that we've had two weeks yet to really look at this data. And so I'm not comfortable that we can do a May eighteenth opening until we've had two weeks of, I mean, Dr. Arona's told us that. So at this point, I'd have to say, as long as we can have elections, I'd say June thirteenth.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Henderson, May the eighteenth or June the thirteenth?
Well, I think the a little bit longer wouldn't hurt us any, it would give us more time to, you know, it would at least look at more than, so I would say.
Thank you. I think you said June the thirteenth. I wanna make sure we can hear that.
Yes, June thirteenth.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cowan, May the eighteenth or June the thirteenth?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to see the county open up as soon as possible, but I think the data is not there yet. So I would have to just ask to wait till June the eighteenth. I'm sorry, but June third... the June date.
Thank you. June thirteenth, sir. I got you. Mr. Kerr, so I guess it's June thirteenth?
All right. Thank you very much, Chairman. I appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate your input.
Thank you. I think that that will give you a little bit more time to put things in place that you need to get done, so...
Yeah, that's fine. There's no problem with that at all. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. That's all for the county manager report?
Yes, sir. That's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on agenda, I need a motion of approval for the consent agenda. You had an opportunity to look at it, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, this is Nancy Schultz for District One... three. If Mason's done already, I'll say second.
I have a motion on the floor. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Is there a motion by Commissioner Mason and a second by Commissioner Schultz? Any discussion? All in favor?
District Ones and aye.
District Twos aye.
District Threes aye.
District Four's aye.
District Five is aye.
Thank you. It passes five to zero. Our next on agenda is a public hearing. We'll turn it over to our county attorney.
Mr. Chairman, this is Sam Van Valkenburg.
Hello, Sam.
Hello. So this is a development agreement. And those of you who were in office when we considered the big Facebook development a couple of years ago will be kind of familiar with this concept. Basically, when a company is about to spend many tens or hundreds of millions of dollars, it's asking the county first for a commitment to make sure that its project is going to be in compliance with our various ordinances. So here, Lidl, German supermarket chain, and if your agenda says L-I-D-O, it should actually say L-I-D-L, has asked for a development agreement that ensures that a proposed distribution center just on the south side of Highway twenty in the northwest part of the county will be able to go forward in compliance with the county's ordinances. One of the exhibits to this agreement is a site plan that kind of shows how this large facility will be oriented. And I guess I'll open the floor for Lloyd or whomever to discuss the nature of this facility a little more, but I stand ready to answer any questions about the agreement.
Mr. Chairman, this is Lloyd Kerr.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lidl is looking at opening a million-square-foot storage, warehousing and cold storage facility to service their stores, or future stores. They'll be opening in the southeast. The construction on the project will take approximately two years, I believe. But this will be their distribution center for Georgia, South Carolina, and then they are planning a pretty major expansion into the other parts of the southeast throughout Alabama. Currently, they do have another facility in Virginia that handles most of their central and northeast stores. This agreement is fairly general in nature. There are some specifics in there primarily that the company has requested. And we recommend that the board accept a waiver of $200,000 of the permitting and... Excuse me, the permitting and review fees. We are still... will be collecting a number of fees that would be associated with the project. And we believe that this is an appropriate contribution that the county can make to this particular project. I believe the total number of employees in this project will be close to the 200 mark. And the average hourly wage for the warehouse personnel will be above $15 an hour. And this will be a multimillion-dollar, of course, investment in the community. The other advantage of this project will be that there... And actually has taken place that there are primary and secondary suppliers to Lidl that are looking at property that is nearby to locate their facility. So it would be a real benefit to the community. And some of the other parts of this agreement would be some assurances that the county would remain to be partnering with them when it comes to helping them with the GDOT process for getting their plans approved. And of course, we would help them, and we've agreed to do so in an advisory capacity. And that they have also asked to include some verbiage in there on vested... on their vested rights. And also on... to give some clarifying language on interpretation and application of our ordinances, which we've done. And so with that, we would again recommend that the board approve this development agreement with Lidl.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kerr. I think there was... there's one of the projects that the IDA had been working on. Our economic development team, Dave and Sarah, have been doing a great job in landing this project. I think it's like 270 jobs and like $20 an hour, if I'm not mistaken. I'm opening up for questions. If you guys have any questions, Commissioner Edwards. And we do... also, we do have... I think Sarah is on the phone as well. So she may be able to chime in if need be. As you go, yeah. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no questions.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions either.
Thank you. Commissioner Schultz?
Mr. Chair, thank you. This is in District Three. And actually, I had all my questions answered this afternoon, but for the sake of the public that's on this call, I think it would be helpful if we just go back over some of the questions that I had because I did have people reach out to me this week about these... about this particular development. And they really go back to the location of the property just to get some reassurance. It's not really related to the development... not related to waiving the fees, but just the location of the property and how it will impact the surrounding neighborhoods. And finally, the second question about the impact of truck traffic on the access road. So Sarah, if you or if Judy's on the phone, want... on the call, want to answer those two questions for the public, I think that would be helpful.
Mrs. Judy? Who want to go first?
Chairman, I don't mind going first. And thank you for your time tonight. And Commissioner Holt, thank you for your questions. As we spoke earlier in discussion, this specific property that we are looking at has been zoned M2 for quite a while now. It's on the access road, close to an existing industrial park. And so we felt like it was a great asset and great opportunity to encourage more industrial growth for this area. With the relationship to Interstate twenty and to be able to get on and off Almond Road easily, and then with the improvements coming to Almond Road, we felt like this was a great location. Along with that, and I know Ms. Johnson's on the call, Judy and I work well together. And I can't say enough, I know we have said it over and over again, but your development services staff and as well as your county manager and to your legal team make my job and Dave's job very easy when we're working on what is best for the county and looking at our codes and zoning content and making sure that we're doing the best thing possible for the community. And so from that, we do feel like that there are plenty of buffer areas that will be adhered to by Lidl. And along with that, Judy might will touch on the fact that the Almond overlay is in place here as well and that at this time, this company is not asking for any variances. And we do not believe there will be any other variance requests moving forward for that. As far as the traffic conversation, myself and the county manager along with Chester have been in multiple conversations with GDOT. There was recently a third-party discussion with their engineering firm and a traffic study that was submitted recently that they did. And we'd be happy to share that content with you all if you're requesting that. But I will turn it over to Judy and see if she has any further answers.
Mrs. Judy?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Mrs. Judy, also, can you let the public know? Because I'm getting a million questions that this is not a grocery store. This is a distribution center. I think they're ready for Lidl to bring the grocery store as well.
And I agree with that. We actually have two opportunities in Newton County that Lidl has looked at in the past to potentially locate a grocery store. But in reference to this project, it is a refrigeration warehouse facility. They... the building itself is right under a million square feet. The cost of this project to develop is over $100 million being put into our community, the cost of it to develop. That is not its value once it is developed. And I agree with what Sarah was saying. The beauty of this location is that it is located along I-20. So a lot of your truck traffic noise and concerns such as that are going to be mitigated through the fact that you're right on the interstate itself. Plus, the facility is going to be more than 800 feet from a property line from where the building will actually begin. And they have their warehouse portion where they will be loading and unloading trucks on the backside, which we're not looking at the aerial, but on the backside of this, which actually abuts Ch Mesa Business Park. So the action or the business of it will not be on any residential side. We have some land, natural resources on the property. The property is over 115 acres. They are only going to be disturbing and developing less than 68 of these acres. So you can imagine there are substantial buffers, green space, areas, landscaping requirements. And as Sarah mentioned, there is no request for any relief to the Almond overlay. So this structure will be built to the Almond overlay standards.
Thank you. They answered your question, Commissioner Schultz?
Yes. When did we start bringing dogs to the Board of Commissioner meeting?
Yeah, we're gonna... thank you. I was gonna ask them to. If you would, if you're not talking, please mute your phone. Do away with the background noise. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Sarah and Judy. Those were very helpful. And I think it would probably be helpful if we do have a copy of the traffic study so that anyone that asks those questions, we can reference that readily. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah and Judy, please don't go nowhere yet. We've got two more Commissioners. Commissioner Henderson, you have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. And it's the... the question is, is how many of that 275, I think, the chairman quoted? And somebody said quoted 200. Of those 200 people will be hired from Newton County?
Sarah, can you explain the type of jobs these will be? An opportunity that Newton County has to land these jobs?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman, and Commissioner Henderson. One of the things that we look for in recruiting companies to come to town is to make sure that our educational training as well as our assets match up with companies that we are bringing in. So point of reference for this one, the program that you all help support and fund in logistics training, the LEAP program with Georgia Tech, goes into supply chain management and logistics, which is exactly related back in to Lidl as a distribution center, needing either truck drivers or facility maintenance, individuals or people that are dealing with sales. And as a result of that, they found that through many people receiving those certificates in Newton County, that there is a product of talent here and that people are trained and understand how to work in logistics training and in supply chain management. And so that was something as an asset. Also, Georgia Piedmont Technical Truck College has a great deal of training under CDL training for truck driving as well as logistics training. And we are continuing to work with automation training here as well. So we do have a higher percentage of individuals that could obtain these jobs. And that is something that is a focus and also a focus of them when they looked at our talent pool as well.
Yes, ma'am. And thank you, thank you, sir, for telling me. One other question that I do have is that I think at a previous meeting, we were talking about bonuses. So typically, every new company comes by and they give a ED employee or employees a bonus? Would this company give you a bonus?
No, sir. I have not received any funds, nor do I receive funds at all from any individual companies or anything at all.
Yes, ma'am. But I think the last thing when we talked about Facebook, I was... we were told by the chairman, from a question that I asked, that Mr. Dave and you received a $15,000 bonus.
Now, that's not... that's not accurate. Sarah didn't receive any tax... I'll explain it. Sarah did not receive any taxpayer money.
Well, I understand it.
No, no, no. I'm telling you, he received something, her and Shane Short, from Facebook, which wasn't... which wasn't any taxpayer's dollars. So I want to make sure we say that right.
Yeah, can I respond to that? Even though I understand it, and you know... But the question was posed to me was that any company that came in, they could give anybody on the ED board a bonus as long as it wasn't taxpayer money. And so I think they said, well, they were asking me, so would it be... shouldn't we be informed of any bonuses that we're giving out? Just for this in Newton County?
Commissioner Henderson, we do, as we set up and even our policy moving forward with the Development Authority, if we receive any type of gifts or details or funding sources, we are required to state them or announce them. The current contract that we have with the Joint Development Authority, Stanton Springs, myself, is very different. It is only if we... because we do not get paid by the Joint Development Authority, and you all are paying for us under employment as well as Mr. Short in Walton County respectively, is that if we receive... if there is land settlement, not taxpayer dollars, but land settlement, is that that fund would then go back to the services that we worked for them, if that makes sense? And Chairman, if I'm wrong, I know you were on the JDA, if that is accurate.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so I guess, and this is my last ques... I guess question. So that if a company or any company, even the ones, the newer ones, the ones from the past, if they want to give anybody on the authority a bonus, they could, as long as it wasn't taxpayer dollars?
I don't, I, I don't think that's, I don't think that's legal to do that. But I definitely have to refer to legal on that. But I definitely don't think that's legal to give a sitting member of an authority money.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cowan?
Yes, Ms. Chairman. Just one question. I noticed in the agreement that this is just for a agreement to not collect any fees, but there's no tax abatement to this agreement, is there?
No, no, sir. This is Judy. No, sir, there is no tax abatement request on this. The only cost savings would be in the development permit fees. And those are at approximately 50% of the fees we would collect. So these are not full fees, but there is a certain dollar amount up to $200,000. But there is no request for any other type of cost savings or values for this company.
Thank you. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. First of all, thank you, Sam. Thank you, Lloyd. Thank you, Judy. Thank you, Sarah. At this time, we're going to open it up for the public, as a public hearing, to see if the public have any comments about this. If you do, you can speak now. If you would, mash star six and unmute your phone. We are opening up to the public for public comments. If you would, press star six and unmute your phone. You'll be able to make comments at this time. One more time. At this time, we're opening up a public comment. You can comment about this if you would. Press star six and unmute your phone. And you can do so now. Thank you. Our public hearing is closed. Commissioners, I seek a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, this is in District Three. So I move for approval of the development agreement with Lidl and the Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, yeah, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And I would just like to clarify one point of that motion, which is that the agreement question shall be the one that I emailed to the board at 6:30 this afternoon.
The one for $200,000 in fees?
Yes.
So do I need to stipulate that in the motion?
Please.
So I move for approval of the development agreement between Newton County, Georgia, and Lidl Operations, subject to the $200,000 fee waiver. Is that appropriate?
I, I think that's clear.
Okay.
Can I get a second, please?
Commissioner Mason from District Two.
Thank you. It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz, second by Commissioner Mason. Any more discussion? All in favor?
That's an I from District One.
Thank you, sir.
I from District Two.
Thank you, sir.
I from District Three.
Thank you, ma'am.
I from District Four.
Thank you, sir.
I from District Five.
Thank you, sir. The pass is five to zero. Thank you so much. Next is item number 10, five services, requesting the approval of a pre-con design phase contract with Kevin Price, general contractor. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm going to ask Jeff Prime, who's our project manager for this project. I believe Mr. Prime is on the line. Will come online there and go ahead and present this to you all. Jeff, are you there?
Yes, sir. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Great, go ahead. Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, sir. Working with the fire department and the procurement, Randy, we put out an RFP for a design build team. We had multiple options that were submitted to us during that process. Kevin Price was ranked and evaluated in his team to be the number one candidate. Once they were brought on board, we began to negotiate with them for their design fees and their pre-con fees. And we ended up at the $135,000 contract amount that you see being requested of you tonight. So this would be the first step toward moving toward the, so we would, if you were awarded this contract to them, this would allow us to enter into contract with Kevin Price, start the design, and begin to work toward a guaranteed maximum price for deconstruction that we would bring to you as a second motion down the road.
So, quick question. So Kevin Price, this is just for the design? This is not the actual, the contract to do the work?
That's right. This is just for the design and pre-con, pre-construction services. This covers all the civil engineering, architectural, structural, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineering services that would have to be done on not only fire station number four, but also for the master planning work for fire station number two. And pre-construction services that the construction manager, management firm of Kevin Price would provide, which would be to help us to evaluate cost, budget, and schedule as well. This is the very same process and, and a little bit about similar fees that we had for fire station number eight.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, this is Lloyd.
Yes, sir.
I, I just want to make sure we're clear, though. The construction would not be, would not be bid out. This is for the selection of Kevin Price was for the design build. So his firm would be doing, if you approve this tonight, you're approving the selection of his firm to design it, to do the design build. But what you're doing right now is approving the, the pre-construction and the design portion of the, of the contract. So, and I think your question was, if he does his design, would then the construction be bid out? And I don't believe, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, that's, am I, but that's not what would happen.
No, sir. Basically, what, what, and sorry for the confusion there, but no, sir, he, as a design builder, they would both design it and then build it. The, the contract is a two-step process. Step one is to hire them to do the design and get us ready to come back with a guaranteed maximum price to do the construction. That would be the second motion that would be brought back to you, much like what we're going to be doing with fire station eight in a few weeks.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you ready for a motion?
Let's see, well, yeah, you can make a motion.
No, I'm sorry, I don't have any questions. I'm sorry.
Okay. You can make a motion and then we'll let the commissioner, that question's in there in discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I move for approval of pre, pre-construction design phase contract with Kevin Price, General Contractor Incorporated, for fire stations two and four at a cost not to exceed $135,000. And that funding source is the general fund.
Can I get a second, please?
Second, District Three.
Thank you. It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Schultz. Any discussion?
I have a quick question, if I may, Ms. Chairman.
No, no, we're gonna, we're gonna open the floor, we're gonna open it up.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Edwards, you have any, any discussion? No?
I don't, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to ask Lloyd, because I believe when we were discussing initially the fire stations, we were talking about doing some bonding. Have we heard anything about that bonding at that particular point? Because I know the monies for this is supposed to be coming out of the general fund. So, but I know we had originally, initially talked about bonding these projects. So do we have an updated status on that?
Well, when, once we get the maximum guaranteed price, then we'll issue the bond. But we won't do it until then. And this portion of it can be funded out of the general fund, out of the capital improvements fund. So, but as soon as we get the, as soon as they complete their design and we have a guaranteed maximum price, then we can move to the bonding.
Okay, so that was the only question I had. Thank you, Mr. Judy.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Schultz?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. So what, what was the amount of money you said, what you, what you said at first, I kind of was, was kind of walking in the backyard. And what, what was the amount?
Well, we are going to bond the project, this initial cost, but, but we won't bond the project until we get a maximum, the, until we get the maximum guaranteed price. And that won't come until after we get the, until after the design is complete. At that point, then, we would move to bonding. This initial phase will be coming out of the, the general fund and most likely be coming from the capital improvements fund.
Okay. If, if, if my memory serves me right, and I was trying to think of, of a, the part mean that we discussed it, in which I was in favor and still is in favor of it, it was about $5 million of monies that we were looking to bond this station.
And that, that's correct. That's about what we're looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Commissioner Cowan?
I don't have any questions. I've known Kevin Price's group for about 40 years and I know they do good, good work and very good folks.
Thank you, sir. All in favor?
District One is an I.
District Two is an I.
District Three's an I.
District Four is an I.
District Five was a.
Thank you. The pass is five to zero. Next on agenda is Neighbors Market, Covington, I mean, this is final reading, final reading, Covington 14656 Brownbridge Road, Covington GA 30016, Sabuden S, Sora, Sora, District Two. Abbott?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to go ahead and approve the final reading for Neighbors Market, Covington at 14656 Brownbridge Road, Covington, Georgia 30016, for Sabuden S Sarcia in District Two.
District Two, second.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. District One, Commissioner Edwards. It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor?
District One, District One's an I.
District Two, I.
District Three, I.
District Four, I. District Five, I.
Commissioner Henderson, did you say I?
What, you were referring to me?
Yes, did you say I?
Yes, I did.
Thanks, sir. Pass is five to zero. Thank you. Next is item number 12, citizen comments. This is an opportunity we let citizens make comments about any topic. You may do so at this time. You have a three-minute time limit. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. If you, if you would, press star six, that will allow you to unmute your phone and you can begin making your comments at this time. Anyone want to make comments? Anyone want to make comments? Thank you. Commissioner Cowan?
Yes.
Commissioner comments?
I don't have any time, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Henderson, commission to comment?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. My comment is, is one that I think we all, as, as a board, have, have all supported. And that is transparency. We think, we believe that the key, that is the key to, is what our constituency all over the county, at large, wants. They want to know, first of all, how our money is, is being spent and what is all, in the bigger picture, what's taking place and whether or not, you know, who is receiving what. I believe that we should take the opportunity to look at, and same, similar what we do as, as district commissioners. If I receive anything over 100, anything over $100, then I got to put on disclosure report that, so it can be viewed by the public. And I think now that we are taking on more of a responsibility with different departments, then we need to make that, we need to make that, what we need to do for our county, making it available for anybody in the county. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Schultz?
I don't have any comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to take this opportunity to thank everybody for your prayers, for your love and your support of Tristan Devon Mason, the newest prince to our family. We're excited to have him here. But I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the queen in my life, the lady in my life that really did most of the work. She was in 21 hours of, 21 hours of labor. And so I, that's the longest labor she's ever had. And so I was just amazed to see her in labor for 21 hours. But I have to say, once it was time, he was here in five minutes. So it went very, very fast. And she is a trooper. It almost brings me to tears just thinking about it, just bringing a life, you know, your wife doing that for you. And I told my wife, I said, "Thank you. I won't ever ask you to do it again. This is my last time asking you to do that." But it was very emotional for me to watch that entire process and to see him come in. The cord was around his neck when he was first coming out. And so they kind of had to stop, you know, to cut the cords. I missed out on cutting the cord. But it's quite okay. I got to trim the cord. So I was excited about at least being able to do that. But he's here, he's doing well. We didn't get much sleep last night. My wife, my wife was up and I was up like every hour. And so we're working to get him on a schedule. And so we're just happy. We're really, really happy right now. Thank you all so much for your love, support during this time. And I also want to say... um, if you're looking for hand sanitizer, you can find it at Target. I'm like, I'm finally been able to find hand sanitizer finally, um, which we had small amounts, but we needed more. So, if you need hand sanitizer for anybody, you can get it at Target. They are limiting one per customer.
Thank you, sir.
Um, but that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. First of all, uh, Commissioner, congratulations that you can have all that cord cutting stuff. That's, that's. But, um, uh, to, to, a couple of the brief things. Thank you, Board, for voting for the, uh, fire station two and four design bills. I really appreciate that. I know that, uh, that station two will serve District Two as well, and station four will serve districts one and five. So, uh, uh, across the county, uh, help there. Um, lastly, Judge Osborne, uh, he's, h- his retirement. I've, I've never met a finer man. Uh, I, I just haven't. Wisdom, um, uh, his, uh, his faith, his wisdom, uh, is going to leave a gaping hole in our judicial system. Hopefully, it'll be filled pretty fast. Um, I, I hold him up there in the same regard as I do, uh, Chief Turner. So, um, luckily, uh, Judge Osborne's still with us. But, uh, and then lastly, Judge Roberts, um, condolences to that family. Judge Roberts' family and my family, when Judge Roberts and I were kids, were very, very close. And I spent quite a bit of time with her in our younger years, and it's just, just sad, and we're so sorry to hear of her passing, but, um, our prayers are with that family. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner, I just, uh, Commissioner Mason, I want to say to you, we're just thankful, uh, to the Lord that, you know, dealing with this COVID nineteen, that you was able to be in there, uh, to see that special moment. Uh, that, that hasn't been the case for a lot of other people. So, uh, you know, we're just thankful that you was able to be there with your wife and to see your son, the birth of your son. Um, guys, I don't have anything, but we do have a need for executive session tonight. Um, we will not be taking a vote. We will not be taking a vote, but we, we will come back into the meeting and dismiss, um, Mr. Fazio, if you are there, I'm going to ask you to put everybody in the waiting room. Um, and let me get a motion first, but I do seek a motion that we enter into executive session.
So, moved by this, by District One.
Second by District Three.
All in favor?
District One is an I.
District Two is I.
District Three is an I.
District Four, an I.
District Five, an I.
Thank you. Before I, before I hit the galvo, Megan, are you there? Mr. Kerr, are you there? No, that's, that's Megan.
Hey, guys. Sorry, I hit the wrong button. I apologize.
Oh, no problem. Megan, um, is that, um, land acquisition or?
Land acquisition and disposal, what we need to discuss. Yeah, but.
And disposal. I'm going to make sure I get that last piece in there correctly. Uh, land acquisition and disposal.
Yes, sir.
So, we, the pass is five to zero. Five to zero, we are in executive session. Motion, well, we back in a, um, our, our regular meeting. Um, I seek a motion that we adjourn.
So, moved by District One.
Second by District Two.
It is a motion by District, uh, One Commissioner Stan Edwards and this, second by District Two Commissioner, Mr. Demond, you dad, uh, Mason. Uh, all in favor?
District One is an I.
District Two is an I.
District Three is an I.
District Four, an I.
District Five is I.
Thank you, guys. Five to zero. Y'all have a great night.